Yeah.
Eighth hour.
So, okay, here's the deal. People who are here for the study session, in order to make this fair for those who can't be here, I'm gonna be putting the piece of paper that I just gave you, which is a different version of the study guide, available on my website and also so you guys can see it here. So people at home this afternoon, this evening, whatever it might be, they can do the same thing that we are, okay? So what I would like you all to do is look through the study guide that I just -- look through the study -- yes, it's eight pages or nine pages long.
Can we just turn that in the room?
Look, shh. No. Look through that page and, let's see here, send to -- copy. We're gonna look at that. I want you guys to look through there and say, hey, is there anything in these that I have no idea what they're talking about here? And then what we're gonna do is we're gonna go through those and we can answer them fully and I can give you different options as far as what you would do.
Oh my gosh, try to stretch.
Whoa.
Shrek yourself.
Shrek yourself.
Before you shrek yourself.
Ah, ha, 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 ha.
Mr. Smith.
Yeah.
They click on a video for his musicals.
Oh yeah? Interesting.
Um, one.
So right now what you're all doing is you are looking through that study guide I just gave you.
You can't see the scratches.
That's alright.
Do you have mine?
Oh.
Like, find the box.
Well, okay, that's, we're all just, go ahead. So put a star next to that so I can help you with that.
The X means it's domain and the Y is range, right?
Do I start more?
Are we supposed to be working on it or?
You're looking through, seeing which sections you don't understand.
Okay.
Wait, if you don't understand.
I would ask you where you've been the last two weeks.
No, I can understand.
Okay, I would, yeah. You're looking through there to see if there's anything you don't understand.
This study guide would be easier for teachers.
Study guide.
Study guide is better.
We haven't done work on word for word.
There was one in an example, but we smitten.
Oh.
Eighth hour.
This is eighth hour?
Yes, it's eighth hour.
This is eighth hour.
Like, it said that one time the same. I was like, it's eighth hour. And he was like, you always say five.
Well, you know, it's all, yeah.
Yeah, well, this is for you. I'm not gonna collect this. Alright.
You told them about me throwing glue at you?
Yeah. How could I forget it? I'm traumatized. I had to go to counseling for it.
Oh my gosh.
Not really. I said that I had to go to counseling when Dana tried to toss a piece of glue at me, but it ended up throwing harsh skin.
She tucked it. She had glue on aim and everything.
Secret.
Alright.
Eighth hour.
Eighth hour. Now, we can bounce around a little bit on this, but the main thing is we can do one from each section or we can do how that goes. Now with these ones here, is there any of these between numbers one, two, three, four, something that's just like, okay, I don't like the way this looks? What do I do here? That sort of thing.
Can we draw yours?
Do you need to do that?
Order pairs.
One through four, everybody's 100% down. You know what's going on?
Which one do you like?
Shh. Which one do you like? Or which one do you not like?
Number two.
Let's check out number two. So everybody, we can do number two. It says here, the instructions are, for each of the following relations, state the domain, range, and list the ordered pairs. Plot each point and determine if the relation is a function. So it's number three. Zoom in a little bit.
You don't have to do the same on the slide.
Hmm?
Number two.
You done number two?
Yeah.
Which one do you want? Two? I'm sorry, I misheard you. So the domain, to remind you all, the domain is gonna be all of your x-values. You don't need to repeat when the domains repeat. So as you can see, we have negative one happening and negative one happening. So my domains are going to be just negative one and then zero happens and zero happens again. So it's just gonna be one and zero. We don't need to. Yes, sir.
Is this relation?
We're getting there. Yes. Okay. So then the range is going to be a similar situation. We have negative two, zero, three, six. Now, I'm gonna go ahead and plot these. Whoa.
It was negative three.
My goodness. Okay, I was scared. That's okay. You all were shooting your hands up in concern. Yeah, Dominique?
Does it have to be the brackets or can it be parentheses?
Or not?
Doesn't matter. We can go with.
No.
I put parentheses.
I put parentheses too.
Let's go brackets. Cause when it's parentheses, it looks like it's an ordered pair. Okay? It looks like an ordered pair.
I put parentheses for my.
That's fine. That's fine. Yeah.
So for the domain, you just put negative one and negative there just because it repeats?
Yep, cause they repeat. So I'm going to also do the ordered pairs. The ordered pairs are negative one, negative two, because this is the, let's get that out of here, get that out of there. Here's an ordered pair, here's an ordered pair, here's an ordered pair, here's an ordered pair. Ordered pair, zero, zero, negative one, negative three, and finally, zero, six.
This one will test?
Yes. Yes.
It's really easy.
It will?
So these are three points that we would've earned. Another point that we have to earn is we have to plot those points. So I'm gonna plot those points that we just did. Zero, negative two, or negative one, negative two. Zero, zero. One, negative three. One, negative one, negative three.
Do we have to do?
Zero, six. Now, there's a couple things we have to do. Is this relation a function? And this was from section eight dash one. And what was the test that we did to do this?
If you fold your paper.
Mm-hmm.
Whenever you're like, kind of looking at it as if it's created and you're lining it up, if the two of them come on the same line, then it's not a function.
Exactly. So you do the vertical line test. And what you do is you fold your paper. I'm gonna give you a piece of paper that, is that shrek yourself or check yourself before you shrek yourself? And you can use that. Okay? And when you're bringing your paper across, if this guy hits any of the two points at the same time, that means that it is not a function because it shares a domain. This one, as we're, let me just demonstrate that though. But you're right. You're right.
I am?
Yep. So I'm bringing this guy across and as I bring it across, there's only one. Boom. The first one that I see, I've hit two x-values that are the same. So that means it's not a function. Okay? It's not a function. And also, if I were to have collected, connected all these, are these all linear? No, it's not linear either.
Do you like describes?
Can I describe linear?
No.
Okay, yes. Here is, if all the points like that are linear, it's linear. If all the points are like this.
My data.
If all the points are like this, then it's not linear.
If it had the word line in it.
Yeah, it has the word line in it.
Oh my gosh.
Are you drawing? Is that like a person?
Yeah. So those are not linear.
So it's like line, but?
A line has a line. It has the word line in it. So if you have all this stuff, then all this one plot point is like, whoop, way over here, it's not linear. Yes, ma'am?
I did.
Your what?
It was pretty.
Alright, let's see here, what other one is very different? Let's go down to number five. Each of the following equations, set four values for x and substitute them into the equation. Plot the ordered pairs and graph the relationship. State the ordered pairs to determine if the function is linear. Hello?
No.
It's, yes, I just called it somebody else. Yes.
Are you?
So one of the main things is, it says, select four values for x. That is your decision. You can choose whatever different values of x you want to. But the thing is, look at your gra, actually, your graph on your test is gonna have 10. It's gonna go up to 10. It's actually looking like.
Are those things gonna be painted?
Oh, no.
Oh my god.
That is so greedy.
Okay, these are the graphs that are on your test, not yours. These are the graphs that are on my kid's tests.
What's different?
Hers goes up to seven, yeah.
I don't get how you're supposed to.
I'll, yep, I would love to. So the question was, how do we find y?
Wait, wait a minute.
It's that.
I know.
I have to do it. I have to do it.
Now, this is important. Now, the first thing you always wanna do is get it into something that looks like slope-intercept form. You always wanna get whatever you're doing to look like y equals mx, ugh, mx plus b. You wanna be mx plus b. So we have to get y by itself before we can even solve for y. I'll show ya. So we wanna make it look like that. So the main thing is, we want to make y be asocial, keep it by itself. I need to thicken up my pen. So I have 2x minus 2y equals 4. In order to begin to get y by itself, I have to solve for my variable. So it's solving equations. Okay? Since we have a positive 2x, we could go one of two ways. Since we have a negative 2y, we can go one of two ways. I do not like to do division by negative one, cause seventh graders don't do so well with that. So what I'm gonna do instead is, I'm gonna add 2y to both sides to get rid of it from one side. Now, some of you are like, wait, you're putting y on the right side.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, it'd be, you told me to add it by two. By the n.
So subtract 2x, you mean? That might've been a different problem. I subtracted 2y. What would you, would you rather me subtract 2x?
Yeah.
It would look like.
This is solving equations that we've had on three tests this year. Mm-hmm.
Well, it's, you said you wanted y to be along, but then you put it by the four. You put in a couple.
Because it's, alright, there you go. You know what? I'm gonna do this. This'll help. This'll help. This'll help. So I'm gonna take 2x from both sides, minus 2x. So now I have a negative 2y is equal to negative 2x plus 4. And the reason I say negative 2x plus 4 is because 4 minus 2x is the same thing as that. It's just in a different order. It's the associative property of subtraction. Or associative property, no, commutative property of addition, commutative property of subtraction. So now, I have a negative 2y being multiplied by the y. In order to get that to go away, I have to do the inverse operation, which is divide by two, or a negative two. I'm gonna divide this whole side by negative two as well. Now, if this, I need to point this out. If this right here was a inequality, I would have to flip my sign, because remember, whenever you divide or multiply by a negative with an inequality, the sign flips. Do you guys remember saying that?
Yes.
Okay?
Yeah.
Good. Like a billion times, I like hearing that. So now, I'm gonna just pop down below this for demonstrative reasons. I now have y by itself. Yay! And negative two divided by negative two x plus four divided by negative two. To simplify that even further, I have negative two over negative two is just one, cause anything divided by exactly itself is one. Plus negative two. But I don't really like the inverse, negative inverse. I could just do that. You can, you can have it like that. I'm just showing a different way. Now, I have found that this is y equals x minus two. So much more pretty. So I'm, now I can get started. Now I can get started with the table.
I'm trying to draw.
You always wanna solve for y at the beginning. That's okay, we all get it at different points. Yeah.
Can't you solve it the regular way, but just add x and then like do two whatever you have in x and then figure out what, what.
I wanna set the standard that I want you to start looking at it in slope-intercept form before you do anything else. Your way would work. Let's do two of them, the way that I just showed everyone, and we're gonna do two of them your way.
But will we get confused?
You won't get confused, because I'm gonna show you two ways that if you understand this. Yes, you may look away. Now, view, let's go to 150. There we go. So I have a substitution. I'm gonna put anything in there. I wanna make sure that I don't go off of this map, that I have that eight circled. So I'm gonna go with smaller numbers. Okay? What numbers should we choose?
Zero.
Zero. Let's get a negative in there as well.
Negative one.
Negative one? Okay? Frenchie?
Negative three.
Negative three? Let's go with a positive, please? Yeah. Maddie? Three. So now I'm gonna substitute these x's in for this x. Okay? I'm gonna substitute those in there. So I'm gonna rewrite it that same way. I'm gonna write, uh, zero minus two equals y. I'm just gonna do them all right now. Zero, negative one, minus two. I said zero, I didn't mean to say zero. So zero minus two is negative two. Negative one minus two, negative three. Now let's do it Caden's way, for these two. Just then, we substituted them in for the one that we have in green here. Now let's do it, let's not use red.
Can we do our Caden's way all the time?
You can do it any way that you want to, as long as you get the correct answer.
This way?
And you demonstrate it. Now, what Caden wants to do is, he wants to substitute this x in there. So he has two, there's our three for the x, minus 2y equals 4. And did you solve for that equation four times?
Oh, yeah, that's normally how I get it.
Okay. So what Caden did was, rather than solving for y once, he just found what y was. So what he would do in this situation, and I'm not gonna continue with this until I show you this, to show people what's happening.
Did you mic them?
Yeah. So what he would do is, he would do six minus 2y equals 4, and then he would solve for y. Minus six, minus six, negative 2y is equal to negative 2.
Less two?
Divided by negative 2, divided by negative 2, y equals 1. So he would find that y equals 1. So that's one way to do it. That's a lot longer.
It's easier.
It's okay, that's the bottom line. It can seem easier and I want you to do that, but you only have 47 minutes to take the test tomorrow. Just saying. Ish.
Our class is less. That's why this class is, trust me.
Well, 52 minutes is our minutes per class.
2y coming up every minute.
Cause we have to distribute. So.
That's stupid. Our class. Don't forget the y is equal to.
Is it a negative three?
Yeah, it was negative three.
Hmm, this shouldn't.
Yeah, it was negative.
It was negative.
Did we do, that should've come out the same way. That should've come out the same way when I just demonstrated that for, hmm. So then we have three. So now I'm gonna plot those points. I have my domain. I shouldn't have been that, I'm nervous now. My domain is zero, negative one, negative three, three? My range is negative two.
If it's a positive and a negative, like if it's the same number, but.
As long as it's a different integer. Something's got me nervous that we did that wrong. We'll find out.
Check also.
Cause if it isn't a straight line, then we messed up. So my ordered pairs, zero, negative two. Where am I getting these from? There's my x-value. There's my y-value. Zero, negative two. Negative one, negative three. Negative, yeah, negative three, negative five. And, three, one. Thank you. So the next thing that we have to do is we have to plot those points. I'm gonna plot some points. Zero, negative two. Negative one, negative five. Negative three. Negative five. Three, one. This one might not be correct.
Mr. Smith.
I did one, negative five wrong?
Yeah. You should be negative one, negative three.
See, the kids have to learn. It's negative three.
Negative one. Ah. Yes. And, do our points make a line?
Yes.
So, are they lineer?
Lineer.
I know, I know, I'm just playing with the words. I'm helping people learn it.
Actually, we, your school issued straight ads to draw a line.
Yep, school issued straight ads to draw a line. I should go to the store, I should go to the store and pick up some candy for people who are wearing their IDs during class tomorrow.
Okay.
I should.
Okay. I always have. Oh, wear mine tomorrow. Hey, Kylie, that's why. Mine on. You have gummy bears in your drawer.
Yeah, but they are, yeah. They are.
They're.
So is it linear?
He gave you some. Yes.
Yes.
But you didn't give me some for Kylie's embrace for you? Okay. For you. You have made Dana cry.
I know.
She doesn't care. Michael would've liked it.
Yeah.
I'm in love. I'm in love.
Um, hey. Here's what I want you to do. We didn't do, uh, no, just put a cross over nine through 12, cause we didn't do that section. We did not.
I was like, uh. Where is? Is this not gonna be on the test?
No. But number 15 will.
Okay. And then it's, um, itself.
Thirteen is just a word problem.
There's three. Thirteen and fourteen.
Well, there could be something like that, but there's not, no, there's not a word problem.
Okay, so I can cross that out?
Let's do number 15. Okay, I got, I got this question and that question. Yes.
I have the answers.
Okay, what, there's a couple of them. There's a couple of them.
I have eight answers.
Alright, are you gonna help with 15? Is that what you're gonna do? What's your question?
Are we gonna need to know the formulas, like all the formulas for everything? Or are you gonna?
There's only, there's only two formulas that you've learned. Change in y over change in x and the slope-intercept form.
Well, it's like the m and b and x and y.
That's the slope-intercept form.
Put the games on.
Okay. What is one of them?
Okay, so the y.
Okay, the, the y?
Okay, so the y.
Hey, people, please stop talking.
So what is that, an mx plus b?
No, that is wrong. Cam?
Change in y over change in.
Change in y over change in x. And what that is, that's just another way of writing, um, the saying the difference of y's.
Distance.
Oh, dis, there you go, that's better.
It's a difference.
Well, it is a difference. Distance.
Why do you get distance over distance of y?
Of x's.
Okay.
Okay, that's just another way of saying that. Then there's another one. What else could we refer to be as? So if you don't understand this, I mean, I'm not gonna tell you to get off, cause you're here by choice, but you think you'd wanna.
Actually, I'm your best.
You're undef, undef.
Me?
What's another way that we could see something and be like, oh, that's slope? Yeah.
I hate someone else.
Yeah. David? Rise over run.
I said that, but yeah.
Rise over run.
Yeah.
And there's one more. So here's one, here's two, then there's three. Yes.
Is it m?
The letter m. Nope. The letter m, that is slope as well.
Oh, cause, I have a letter m. So then it's, yeah, I do those, popper leaves, ouch.
Now let's do, let's do this with finding the change in y over change in x with just having a couple of plot points and not having a graph.
Okay.
So we're gonna do change in y over change in x. Here's my y-values. There's my x-values.
Three minus five.
Okay? So I'm gonna take my change in y, it's gonna be three minus five, cause it changes from three and goes to five. Then I'm gonna take my five minus two.
Stop.
I have negative, take care, Kida.
I don't mind.
So my slope is negative two over three. Now, should I make that into a decimal?
No.
No, keep it, keep it a fraction, please.
Didn't you say that yesterday?
I said it many days, yes.
We had like a fraction question, like for, we reviewed the path of y.
Yeah, simplify. It will be the same thing, for example, if I'm, if I'm going with a slope that is, if I'm going with a slope that's gonna be four over eight. Let's zoom in on this. A student just asked, would we need to, would we need to simplify? If it's on a graph, it's gonna be just the same. So if I had a slope that I was going from the origin, that's four eighths, I'm going rise, one, two, three, four, run, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. So that would be my spot. Okay?
Raise.
Where this, I'm giving an example of if my slope was, yeah, if my slope was four over eight. And then if I wanted to simplify it, I could've simplified that slope to being one half, right?
Oh, so it's.
So it could be, it would be up one, rise two. Up one, rise two. Up one over two. And look what, look what meets up with.
Oh, that, their buddy at the store.
See how it stays there? Yep. So you technically don't have to, but if you run out of room, then there's a way to do it. Yeah.
So if it was, if it was, um, an improper fraction.
If it was, okay.
Would you have to make it a mixed number?
No, do not make it a mixed number because of this. If I had an improper fraction where it was five halves and I was coming from this point here, and I wanna, and I know my slope is going from that, eh, you know what? I'm gonna make it more like the test. I know that my b is. b is 5, b is the y-intercept. My b is 5. So if I had a mixed number, which would be 2 and 1/2, that isn't really clear. Because if I did 2 and 1/2, like, oh, okay, so I'm gonna go up 1, I'm gonna go up 2, and I'm gonna go half, and then with the, oh. So then, I want to keep it a mixed number, just let me finish this thought real quick, okay? If I had the mixed number...
Luke Roberts, if you're in the building, please report to the main office. Luke Roberts reports to the main office.
Yeah, have it as a improper fraction. Yes, sir? That's what this is, playa? I'm stuck, okay, let's... So, let's go backwards. Let's say we had something that, we knew there was a slope of 5 halves. Okay? And my equation was this. That's my equation. My b is my y-intercept. Starting here, negative 4. Yes. Is it with this? Let me finish this number then. Do you want me to make this negative? The slope negative? So now, I started at negative 4, because that's where my y-intercept is. y equals mx plus b. b is the y-intercept. And I have a negative 5 halves slope. It's rise over run, so this is the rise, this is the run. I'm gonna rise negative 5. So I'm dropping 5.
Attention in the building, Luke Roberts, if you are in the building, please report to the main office immediately. Luke Roberts, report to the main office immediately. Thank you.
Okay, so I dropped 5, and I'm gonna run 2. It's still a positive 2. So my slope is gonna be like that. Now, I've run out of room. I want to make another point, just to make sure that I have, I have that right. Okay, I want to make sure that I have that one point right. Now here's the thing, I've run out of room on my map. And I need you to remember the integer division rule, that says that 5 halves is a negative 5 halves regardless of where the negative sign is. So I can look at it this way. So I have now, I rise 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and I'm running backwards 2. 1, 2. I didn't use a straight edge there, so it's not very straight. Where are we? Number 13? Wait. 16? We don't, we don't know where the y-intercept and the x-intercept are on this, because we don't have an equation. We just have 2 points. It's just 2 points. We can go backwards from there. We can make an equation from that. Longer than it would need, because it's not like that in the test, but 5, 3, and 2, 5. Let's do it. That's not it. That's not it. So we were at 5, 3, and 2, 5. Everybody else wants you to look through and see what you would like to see. So it's 5, 3, and 2, 5. 5, 3, and 2, 5 was the 2 points that we had, and we found that it was 1, 2, and 1, 2, 3. So it was up 2, drop, or up 2, back 3. Our slope was up 2 and back 3. If I had my school-issued straight edge from here, what I could do is, I could draw a line going from these 2 points, like I will right now. And that's not gonna be perfect. Where does it cross the y-axis? About, Dominique, this is for you, kiddo. Okay? I haven't heard from Cory yet. Positive 6, so that's the equation that we found just from 2 points. No, no, no. Multiply them to, what? No. Okay. That's what, no, that's what happens when people are just like, words! Oh, I didn't think about those words. But I know you understand, but I, I thought you understood, then you said that, and I was skirt. Alright. You're learning. The last thing that we're gonna do is show how to do the x and the y-intercepts, because there is some confusion with that. Okay? Some confusion with that. Here's the rules to live by for these situations, okay? To find, ew. To find x, and that's to find x-intercept. Kim, get out of there. Intercept, make the other guy 0. Make y 0. To find the x-intercept, make y 0. Looks like zerg. I just love hearing my words repeated back to me, even if they are kinda weird, but they work. Sorry, people who are sitting really close to your monitors. Okay. But you guys don't get on computers anymore, who am I kidding? Yeah. Alright, to find, to find y intercept, what am I gonna do? Yeah, makes, makes x 0. So let's do that with a couple of these. No, but, no. Well, I could. So I'm gonna make, if I wanted to find x-intercept, I'm gonna make y 0. So let's find what the x, ooh, what the x-intercept is. X-intercept. So I'm gonna make y 0. 4, 0, equals 2x minus 24. So 0 equals 2x minus 24. Now we go back in time to what we've been doing all year in 7th grade, which was we solved for x. Yep. You got it again? I don't have stickers. So, the x-intercept crosses at 12. So that means that if we were doing a map, or a graph, we would go to 12, which would be about right here, so here would be 11, here would be 12. Wait, that was the x-intercept. 11, 12, so it would cross right there. Alright, let's get back to work. Now to find the, we're not gonna mess with this guy. To find the y-intercept, we are going to make x 0. For y equals 2, 0, stop hating. Seriously. It's good to not understand something, then understand something, that's a rush, that's adrenaline. And you're sitting there talking smack. So now I'm solving for y. 4, divided by 4. y equals negative 6? y equals negative 6, so that's my y-intercept. That's my y-intercept, so negative 6, yeah. So, you hear somebody talking right now? Don't talk out, shout out, I'll go back to it, I promise. No, there's not. This is for your help. This is for your help. The study guide that I gave you in class is your homework. So then I would go from here to here, and graph it, because that's where it goes across, ew, let's get bigger. That's where it goes across. Great success. Alright, you did not want me going away from here, did you?